It's now twelve noon. First and foremost, we have to do the roll call. Counselor McLeod.
I am here.
Counselor Twill.
Here.
Counselor Yankoff. Counselor Yankoff.
I'm here.
Counselor Rever.
I'm here.
Counselor Duran.
I am here.
Counselor Duran.
Here.
Counselor Yankoff.
Someone has their, uh, computer on. We can hear all the, uh, feedback.
I'm here.
Just put it on mute so you don't have that feedback. Okay, continue with the roll, I'm gonna continue with the roll call. Count, uh, Deputy Mayor Cody.
Here.
Counselor Bernard's here. Counselor McCabe.
I'm here.
Counselor Duffy. Counselor Duffy. Counselor Ramsey.
I'm here.
Counselor Duffy. What's that? Okay. Uh, Counselor Duran, can you hear us? Counselor Duffy?
Yes, I can.
Okay, we're here. So, we didn't hear from Counselor Duran. I'm hearing. Yeah, I'm hearing a feedback there. Counselor Duran, is that you?
Uh, Counselor Duran, could you hear us?
Someone's got their, uh, their, uh, computer on, correct?
Yes.
Yes, I can.
Have you got any of your worship?
Yeah, uh, is that Counselor Duran or is that Counselor Duffy?
Counselor Duffy.
Okay, we're just, uh, there's someone with their computer on, watching the proceedings. You can't do both. Just mute it. Okay, Counselor Duran? No, he's not there. Okay. Good afternoon and happy Budget Day, everyone. Uh, these are definitely uncertain times in our city and across the globe, and we must be vigilant. We are delivering the budget a bit differently this year as we heed the calls of Dr. Heather Morrison, her staff, and other authorities. A special thank you, uh, to our frontline healthcare professionals, professionals, who continually work through these stressful times and keep us, uh, keep all of us safe. To all the Charlatown staff who are still working on the frontlines, our water and wastewater utility staff, Parks and Recreation, Public Works, Fire and Police, and those other staff who have, who have adapted their routines to work from home. And let us not forget those who work in grocery stores, pharmacies, honor transit system, and other essential services. We thank you for everything you do. To the public, to the public, to the public that is watching now online, I remind you to stay at home, stay apart, and stay safe. Further, if you're healthy and able to, please check in on your neighbors and support them, especially our vulnerable population. And I, I want to extend this to council and especially Counselor Bernard, who's been coming up to City Hall to make the presentations for the budget. I want to thank you for adapting quickly, uh, to our new reality so we can, uh, still administer all the services that our residents expect us to during this health crisis. Our health is our wealth. That is why we need to practice social and physical distancing. To all the residents of Charlatown, we will get through this together. We will, uh, it will be tough in the, in the weeks to come, but if we follow the advice of professionals, we will return to some sort of normalcy in due time. Thank you, municipal group. So, declarations of conflict of interest. Any?
Seeing none.
Okay. That's good. Approval of the agenda, I need someone to move it.
I'll move it yours.
Moved by?
I'll second it.
Counselor Twill? Seconded by? Okay, moved by Counselor McLeod, seconded by?
I'll second it.
Counselor Ramsey. Okay. Uh, and on the agenda, we have a presentation of the 2020-2021 Operational Budget. So, to get approval, I do, I have to do the roll call. Counselor McLeod? Approval?
In favor.
Counselor Twill?
Yay.
Counselor Yankoff?
Approve.
Counselor, uh, Rever?
In favor.
Counselor Duran? Deputy Mayor Cody?
In favor.
Counselor Bernard, no problem. Counselor, uh, McCabe?
Yes.
Counselor Duffy?
In favor.
Counselor Ramsey?
In favor.
Okay, so Counselor Bernard, can we get you to go to the podium to make your presentation for the Budget 2020-21?
Thank you, your worship. Your worship and members of City Council. Today, as we prepare to unfold the city's 2020-2021 Operations Budget, we realize that there, that we are in times like no other, where there is concern, not only for the physical and mental health of our residents, but also for their financial health and well-being. One thing is clear. COVID-19 has changed how we interact with each other, here at home and around the world. As you look around our city, we see empty parking lots, streets, storefronts, malls, office buildings, schools, restaurants, and places of worship. We see our residents confined to their homes and neighborhoods. We see the struggles of those who are unemployed and without income. And know there are families struggling to keep food on the table and to pay the mortgage or the rent. We see it. These are and will be challenging times. But what we also see are glimmers of hope and the desire for neighbors to help neighbors. I encourage you to continue to stay in touch. Reach out by phone, email, FaceTime, or other virtual means. Or keeping your social distancing, waves will let people know that you are thinking of them and that you do care. Your worship, even in these times, we continue to challenge our CIO and our senior management team to refine our operational costs and find greater efficiencies. Certainly, in these times of challenge and change, those tasks are magnified. The city's budget is a guide which outlines our service levels, while at the same time it identifies how the city will fund those services. As a municipal government, we are constantly facing the balancing act of trying to meet public expectations of maintaining our current service levels and looking for opportunities to enhance those services. Add to that balancing act the need to maintain and replace our aging infrastructure, while at the same time service our growth areas and do it all in a fiscally and operationally sustainable way. Unfortunately, in the months ahead, due to the ongoing pandemic, the city will continue to face budgetary pressures and revenue challenges. As we have done in the past, the city will, of course, manage its operations and continue to work with provincial and federal governments to ensure we strive to meet the collective needs of our citizens and mitigate the fallout of the COVID-19 crisis. On January 28th of this year, council held its pre-budget open house at City Hall, which provided an opportunity for our residents to once again meet with council and the city's senior management team to discuss and review any matter of operational or budgetary concern. This year, we were fortunate to have more than fifty residents drop by, share their views, and provide input, which we very much appreciated. The city also received online input and met with various stakeholders within the business community and the community at large to ensure a well-balanced perspective. This year, your worship, we have been able to avoid a tax increase for both residential and commercial sectors, keeping our $59.7 million operational budget balanced. Water and sewer rates will increase by the Consumer Price Index at a rate of 1.2% as announced in last year's budget address. This will go towards balancing the utility's $14.3 million operational budget. Council originally approved its 2020-2021 capital budget with a gross expenditure of $46 million. That breaks down to be $30.5 million for the city and $15.5 million for the water and sewer utility. Today, we are allocating an additional $1 million of gas tax funds to the street resurfacing budget, which will bring the city's overall capital budget to $47 million, with a net cost to the city of $26 million after federal and provincial partner funding. I would be remiss if I did not take this occasion to once again thank both the federal and provincial governments for their continued understanding of the infrastructure deficits that municipalities are facing throughout this province and within Canada as a whole. Without their continued financial contributions, the city would certainly not have been in a position to invest in the number of capital projects that we have completed over the last number of years under the Clean Water and Wastewater Fund, nor be able to move forward with our various projects under the Investing in Canada Infrastructure and Gas Tax Infrastructure Programs. Again, our heartfelt gratitude, as it is much appreciated. In these times of economic and employment uncertainty, the city must be prepared to play its part and get in the economy up and running again. Understanding the importance of that role, the city is prepared to expedite its capital program once the risk of COVID-19 is diminished. And your worship, some of the highlights for this year's capital budget that we would look to expedite would be $15.4 million for the water and sewer utility upgrades, $5.9 million towards municipal buildings, $4.2 million for new transit buses, $3.8 million for major streetworks, $3.8 million for fire services and emergency services, $3.5 million parks and recreation upgrades, $2.5 million for stormwater management, $2.2 million for sidewalks and multipurpose pathways, $2 million for fleet management, including heavy equipment, $900,000 intersection pedestrian signal upgrades, and $400,000 towards corporate energy upgrades. And your worship, now highlights from the operational budget include $14.9 million for public works, $14.1 million for police and fire services, $3.9 million for parks and recreation, $1.2 million for transit, $660,000 for economic development, and $500,000 for community sustainability initiatives, among other investments. Your worship, as the city's parking garages age, they require increased maintenance to ensure continual use. And over the next few years, we will be spending several million dollars in which to do so. It is this reason that we are having to increase the parking rates for both parkades and on-street parking. Beginning September the first, 2020, on-street parking hourly fees will increase to $2 an hour, and that includes HST. Parkade fees will also increase to $1.75 an hour, and that includes HST. Money collected through parking will be used to maintain and invest in the future capital requirements for the city's three parkades. Last year, your worship, you will recall that the city hit an all-time low with its rental vacancy rate of 0.2%. In response to that demand, the city created an Affordable Housing Action Plan, providing financial incentives for developers to respond to those needs. Your worship, I'm pleased to say the development community has started to respond to those needs, and as a result, the city's current vacancy rate stands around 1.3%. And there is more on the way. The city's building construction in all sectors continues to flourish, ending 2019 with a hundred, or 157.8 million in construction value, an incredible 50% increase over the 2018 season of 105 million of construction value, making it the best construction season in the city's history. So, your worship, as we transcend to the new norm, we will have to work with all stakeholders to get the economy up and running. In the interim, I encourage all residents to do their part in helping us move the city forward. One idea that has come to fruition is a Local Goods Guide, sponsored by Discover Charlatown, which highlights local businesses that are still operating and how we can support them while obtaining our essentials. The Local Goods Guide is a great, easy-to-look-at resource for all the ways we can all support local businesses during this challenging and unique time for all of us. The guide is updated every Tuesday, and you can find it online through Discover Charlatown's website. And we thank them for putting that together. And your worship, at this time, please allow me to fair, paraphrase a quote from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities President Bill Carston. "What's emerging from this pandemic is the best in community resilience and compassion. We see it in the doctors and nurses and support staff who risk their lives to save others. We see it in the bus drivers, garbage collectors, and our many civic workers who keep vital municipal services going. We see it in everyone who picks up groceries for a senior, offers words of encouragement to a friend, and does their part by just staying home." Your worship and members of council, during these challenging times, I want to take this opportunity to also thank Dr. Heather Morrison, Dr. Trevor Jane, Marion Dowling, and their medical staff, as well as Premier Dennis King in the province of PEI for continual leadership, guidance, and advice in keeping islanders safe. In closing, as I've said many times before, developing and implementing the city's budget is not done in isolation by any one individual. It is done by many. It takes teamwork and cooperation at all levels to make it work. In particular, I'd like to thank the Finance, Audit, and Tendering Committee members, which includes your worship and counselors Mike Duffy, Greg Reverde, and Kevin Ramsey. Thank you for your commitment and input during the budget process. I'd also like to thank our CIO, Peter Kelly, as well as our finance manager, Mark Lanigan, and his team for their continual hard work, dedication, and the long hours that had to be put in to prepare this budget. I would be remiss if I didn't also thank each and every member of City Council, our senior management team, and all city staff for working persistently every day to provide municipal services that our residents continue to value, deserve, and expect. To all, thank you very much. That completes, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Bernard. And I want to reiterate our appreciation to both levels of government, the federal and provincial, for their financial assistance in our capital projects and everything else we do together. So, we have some resolutions, Mr. Kelly? Do you want to read the first one? Please.
Your worship, moved by Counsel Bernard, seconded by Counsel, Counsel Rever, that the 2020-2021 City of Charlatown operates solely by its president as presented by Counselor Terry Bernard, Chair of Finance, Audit, and Tendering Committee be approved of.
So, it's moved by Counsel Bernard, seconded by Counsel Rever. Question? Question called? Okay. I'll do the roll call. Counselor McLeod?
In favor. Excuse me, in favor.
Counselor Twill?
In favor.
Counselor Yankoff?
In favor.
Counselor Rever?
In favor.
Counselor Duran? Deputy Mayor Cody?
In favor.
Counselor Bernard? Counselor McCabe?
In favor.
Counselor Duffy?
In favor.
Counselor Ramsey?
In favor.
Okay, so, do you want to go to the next one, sir?
Moved by Counsel Bernard and Counsel Rever, be resolved that a municipal tax rate of 67 cents per $100 of assessment be levied against all non-commercial property in the City of Charlatown for a period of January 1st, 2020, to December 31st, 2020, as per the provisions of the Real Property Tax Act, save and exempt. One, the non-commercial component of property which is owned by a non-resident person or a non-resident corporation, where the municipal tax rate shall be $1.33 per $100 of assessment. Two, the non-commercial component of hotels and motels, where the municipal tax rate shall be 91 cents per $100 of assessment, where the owner is a resident person or a resident corporation. Four, $1.57 per $100 of assessment, where the owner is a non-resident person or a non-commercial corporation. Number three, the non-commercial component of a private building containing four or more units, where the municipal tax rate shall be, A, 91 cents per $100 of assessment, where the owner is a resident person or a, or a resident corporation; or B, $1.57 per $100 of assessment, where the owner is a non-resident person or a non-resident corporation. And number four, the non-commercial component of properties located in the paritoid states and the vertigo states mobile home park, where the municipal tax rate shall be, A, 42 cents per $100 of assessment, where the owner is a resident person or a resident corporation; or B, $1.80 per $100 of assessment, where the owner is a non-resident person or a non-resident corporation. For the purposes of this, for the purposes of this resolution, a non-resident person or a non-resident corporation applies to property owners as described in Section 24 of the Real Property Tax Act regulations. And it be resolved that the municipal tax rate of $2.36 per $100 of assessment be levied against all commercial properties located in the City of Charlatown for the period of January 1st, 2020, to December 31st, 2020, as per the provisions of the Real Property Tax Act. And be further resolved that the City of Charlatown requests the province of PEI to collect an additional 18 cents per $100 of assessment on all commercial properties within the business improvement area as per the attached map for the period of January 1st, 2020, to December 31st, 2020. The monies collected from this shall be transferred to the Downtown Charlatown, Inc. for the purposes of, of marketing and enhancing the downtown core of the City of Charlatown. Your worship.
Mr. Kelly, thank you. Moved by Counsel Bernard, seconded by Counsel Rever. Question?
No question called.
Okay. Roll call. Counselor McLeod?
In favor.
Counselor Twill?
In favor.
Counselor Yankoff?
In favor.
Counselor Rever?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Cody?
In favor.
Counselor Bernard? Counselor McCabe?
In favor.
Counselor Duffy?
In favor.
And Counselor Ramsey?
In favor.
Thank you. Moving on to the next one.
Your worship, moved by Counsel Bernard and Counsel Rever, that the Charlatown Water and Sewer Corporation implement water and sewer, combined water and sewer rates effective April 1st, 2020, as detailed on the attached rate schedule, your worship, and complément.
And that rate schedule is part of this, uh, of the motion. Moved by Counsel Bernard, seconded by Counsel Rever. Question?
No question called.
Okay.
I, I just had a comment, your worship.
You can have, make, make your comment, sir.
I just wanted to make it clear, your worship, that everybody knows, I just wanted to make it clear, your worship, that everybody knows that this was passed in last year's budget, that moving forward, we would do, uh, water and sewer rates by the CPI.
Yes.
And we're just following that when we passed, uh, last year.
Right, and that, that's at what, 1.2%?
1.2%.
Yes. Okay. So, question has been called. And Counselor McLeod?
In favor.
Counselor Twill?
In favor.
Counselor Yankoff?
In favor.
Counselor Rever?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Cody?
In favor.
Counselor Bernard?
Favor.
Counselor McCabe?
In favor.
Counselor Duffy?
In favor.
And Counselor Ramsey?
In favor.
Thank you. Carrie.
Your worship, moved by Counsel Bernard and Counsel Rever, that the City of Charlatown approved the increase of new rates for parking meters and the parkades effective September 1st, 2020, as follows. Parking meters, $2 per hour, HST included, other lots of time proportionate. Parkades, Queen, Paul, and Fitzroy, one-hour parking, $1.75 per hour, plus HS, sorry, HST included. Daily parking, $25 per day, HST included. Monthly parking, $150 per month, HST included, your worship.
Mr. Kelly? Moved by Counsel Bernard, seconded by Counsel Rever. Question?
No questions called.
Questions called. Okay, roll call. Counselor McLeod?
In favor.
Counselor Twill?
In favor.
Counselor Yankoff?
In favor.
Counselor Rever?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Cody?
In favor.
Counselor Bernard?
In favor.
Counselor McCabe?
In favor.
Counselor Duffy?
In favor.
Counselor Ramsey?
In favor.
Thank you. Carrie. Okay, sir?
Your worship, moved by Counsel Bernard and Counsel Rever, that the 2020-2021 capital budget approved on February 6th, 2020, be revised to include an additional $1 million into the street resurfacing budget, and that this additional capital expenditure be funded from the city's allotment from the gas tax funding, your worship.
Okay. Moved by Counsel Bernard, seconded by Counsel Rever. Question?
No questions called.
Questions called, okay. Counselor McLeod?
In favor.
Counselor Twill?
In favor.
Counselor Yankoff?
In favor.
Counselor Rever?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Cody?
In favor.
Counselor Bernard?
Favor.
Counselor McCabe?
In favor.
Counselor Duffy?
In favor.
And Counselor Ramsey?
In favor.
Carried. That's our last resolution. Any final words there, Counsel Bernard?
No, again, just like to, uh, thank everyone for all their cooperation, your worship, and especially, uh, I mentioned some in my speech, but also, uh, all the managers in all the different departments, uh, very cooperative in helping us get this budget through. And, uh, just want to make clear that, uh, budget is a guide, it's a moving document, going through what we're going through. We're, we plan on doing our best. Uh, we want to keep everyone employed, want to make sure everybody has a paycheck. And, uh, so, we'll be, uh, we'll be talking to the provincial government and, uh, we'll be looking to do what we can to, uh, be able to get the economy up and going again whenever the COVID-19, uh, uh, is, uh, dissipates and gone by.
Thank you, Counsel.
Your worship.
Counselor Rever?
Yeah, I just, uh, I just want to take this opportunity also to, to thank Counsel Bernard, uh, for his leadership and hard work on this as well. Um, I know that he wasn't thanking himself in his speech, but, uh, but he also should be recognized, uh, for his great, uh, contribution and effort. So, thank you, Counsel Bernard.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Any other comments?
Uh, just want, your worship, um, since we're in the thanking mood... Uh, just want, your worship, um, since we're in the thanking mood, uh, would also like to thank the emergency measures team, uh, who have been meeting daily and have, and been giving us great, uh, information, uh, without, without adding to the, you know, we'd be in the dark, so just want to hats off to all those folks.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kelly, any other comments? So that being said, I also echo what Counsel Rever said about, uh, Counsel Bernard for the work he's done on this budget and the staff, but just remember, stay safe, practice social distancing, and, uh, we'll get through this together. Thank you very much. Move to adjourn. Moved by Counsel Bernard, seconded by?
Sure.
Is that Counsel Duffy? Seconded by Counsel Duffy. All in favor?
All in favor.
Thank you very much, and stay safe and, uh, practice social distancing. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship.